Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is 7:30 PM on April 13th, 2022. Time for our first regular meeting of this month. At this time, Mr. Johnson will have the invocation and Mr. Schultz will lead us in the pledge. If you will stand.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for those gathered here today, as well as our friends and family across Washington Courthouse. Thank you for your abundant blessings, and thank you for the opportunity to do good work on behalf of the citizens of this city. As we endeavor to do these deeds, we ask that you give us the courage, wisdom, and tenacity required so that we may do them well. And yet, God, as we work, let us be humble and reminded that it is your will, not our own, which will be done. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Schultz. Roll call, please.
Chrisman.
Here.
Hawke.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Lynch.
Here. Uh, we're gonna meet some of our guests here in a moment, but I have a couple of students I would like to introduce themselves. Two of my students, one a first-period student and one a second-period student. And both great young ladies, could you stand up and tell us who you are?
Hi, Megan Seaver.
I'm Morgan Cartwright.
Okay, Megan Seaver and Morgan Cartwright, that's who those two are.
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, wait a minute, what?
Little red beetle.
Oh, Morgan. Why, has she run you down or something? I mean...
Mine says my car.
I guess Morgan Cartwright.
It says Morgan Seay on it, but I don't know why. I don't like Morgan Seay.
Uh, we know it was you.
Yeah, we knew it.
I think there's a guy who wants to speak.
Oh, you wanna speak too?
You wanna speak?
No, it's okay. Do you wanna speak to the council? You do? Mr. Denon will let you sign up there. Not a problem. Okay, um, approval of minutes, and this is from the regular council meeting on March 23rd, 2022. Are there any questions about that, uh, those sets of minutes? Or any changes, et cetera? If not, do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion that we accept these minutes as they're printed.
I'll second that.
All right. Roll call, please.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Moving to our business, any communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
We have a couple of council committees to report this evening. Uh, one is economic strategies and cooperation. Mr. Schultz headed that up that evening. Uh, Mr. Schultz, do you wanna read that?
Oh, I did head that up that evening, didn't I?
Yeah.
Uh, the Economic Strategies and Cooperation Committee met in the city council chambers at 105 North Main Street on Wednesday, March 23rd, 2022, at 5:00 PM. Mr. Schultz presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Ted Hawke, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mrs. Chelsea Baker, economic development director, Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney, Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee reviewed progress with the industrial development. Number two, the committee noted the status of various department and expansion projects within the community and downtown area. The administration advised the committee of new business interests and opening within the area. Number three, the administration advised the committee of Salty Broad, that's a good one, Salty Broad's grand opening on April the 1st at 4:00 PM. Number four, the committee benefited from a review regarding downtown events. The administration encouraged citizens' participation and support of the upcoming April shop hop. Number five, the committee reviewed progress with commercial development. The administration advised that the Hattler Company and Pinmark Properties were progressing with new business opportunities at their locations. Number six, the committee noted that the electric vehicle charging stations were ready to be utilized by the citizens. The administration advised that donations could be made for the use of the station by QR code at the location. Number seven, the administration advised the committee of an opportunity to offer a, uh, fas-
Fassad.
Fassad, I'll get a straighter, a facade grant to the downtown business. The committee had recommended that legislation be brought to council. Number eight, the administration advised the committee of discussion with the Ohio River Foundation regarding the possibility of Pink Creek Wetlands project near the wastewater treatment plant. Number nine, the committee noted that an article was placed in the Spectrum Insert reflecting on the effect of COVID-19 and our business environment. Number 10, the committee noted of an station's in- in- interest. Number 11, the administration advised the committee the branding of downtown continued. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Steve Schultz, member, economic development. Strategies and Cooperation Committee, Mr. Mrs. Kelly Ford, reporting secretary.
Lot to read, Mr. Schultz.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions about that? If not, do we have a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make a motion we accept the minutes.
Second.
Who seconded?
Ted.
Thanks. Okay, roll call.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. And we have finance and personnel. Mr. Blair, you're up to bat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance and Personnel Committee met in the city council chambers of 105 North Main Street on Monday, March 23rd, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Mr. Jim Blair presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Chrisman, council member, Ted Hawke, council member, Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Ms. Kendra Hernandez, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager, and Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney. The committee benefited from a review of the statement of cash for the month ending in February. The committee benefited from a review of the investments of the city of Washington Courthouse. The administration advised the committee that a union township trustee had asked permission to replace equipment at the skate park. The committee recommended that union township be given permission. The committee benefited from a review of the status of COVID relief funds. The committee noted that Ms. Christina Collins had been hired for the position of the Director of Finance and would begin on April the 18th, 2022. The committee discussed the pay of the finance director in relation to the city manager. The committee benefited from a report of personnel matters given by Mr. Denon. The administration noted that police negotiations have been completed and recommended that legislation be brought to council. The committee noted the need to update the pay ordinance to reflect the position of income tax administrator. And lastly, the committee benefited from a review of the Human Resource Department. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Jim Blair, Chairperson of Finance and Personnel, Mrs. Kelly Ford, reporting secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Any questions?
My name needs to be removed. I wasn't there. No, I was at my son's basketball banquet. Thank you.
Pardon? Yeah. Yeah, Kelly, we gotta change Monday to Wednesday, too. So...
They told me with the minutes.
Ms. Hernandez has changed that. Any other changes? Thanks, Kendra. Uh, do we have a motion to accept with those changes?
Well, I'll make a motion to accept with those particular changes, yes.
We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Caleb. Roll call.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. All right, Mr. Denon, your chance to make, give us a report.
Thank you. Want to remind everybody that the deadline to file your city income taxes is April the 18th. Please visit the Tax Department before the 18th. Uh, we always end up with a line every year. Uh, hopefully, some folks will assume that the deadline's Friday, and we'll, we'll get, uh, to a few, quite a few people taken care of on Friday. But you have until the 18th. Uh, if you have your form, and you have your W-2s, you got your 1040 and all the information you need, and you've got that all filled out, you do not have to wait in that line. You can use the night drop at the city building. Okay? You do not have to stand there, wait in the line. Periodically, we'll go out and check and make sure that we don't have a citizen, uh, just standing there with everything. Uh, but if you have everything, put it in an envelope, put it in the night drop at the city building that you use for your utility payments. It is that time of year, Easter is around the corner, and that's lovely and exciting, and it is time for everybody to fire up their lawnmower and their weed eater and to go outside and remember to mow. Uh, it makes the neighborhood look better, it smells nice, it looks lovely, and there's an ordinance about it. Uh, so all wonderful reasons to go out and mow your grass. Uh, Police Department, we talked about earlier today in committee that they have been doing some drone training, which, uh, they will use in specific situations, and we are very excited about that, and it has been a lot of fun for them. We also have on the agenda three contracts, labor agreements, with the police sergeants, the, uh, police patrolmen, and the police dispatchers. Uh, the administration is very happy that we arrived at agreement with all three unions in a relatively timely manner. Uh, and would like to compliment the union for, uh, their cooperation with that effort. And if council, uh, votes in the affirmative tonight, the recommendation is that Kelly, uh, email you tomorrow and work out when we can have a special to, uh, get those three contracts approved and off your agenda and moved along. Uh, but the union has voted in favor of that, and the administration wholly supports it. Any questions?
Thank you for your work on those, Mr. Denon. I believe Mr. Wilson was with you when you were negotiating. The HR person, so... Anyb- any questions for Mr. Denon? All right, uh, obviously, there's no Director of Finance till Monday. Mr. Pitstick, you have anything?
Only thing I will add to Mr. Denon's report is that next week, we will be looking at yards and making sure that they're being mowed. So, we're gonna start some enforcement, light enforcement next week.
And I would remind people to try not to blow grass clippings into the street.
Salute.
That's not helpful. Mowing is helpful. Messing up the streets is not helpful.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask one of you here? Uh, on the ordinance for grass.
Yes.
The, the height is what, six inches?
Eight inches.
Eight inches, so anything over eight inches, you can, uh, enforce that.
Okay.
Okay, that's good to know for the record here. If it doesn't quit raining, we might have a lot of people over there.
We're there. A lot of eight-inch grass around there.
Well, right now, there is.
Yes, okay. Any other comments, questions for Mr. Denon?
I just wondered what height it is typically when it goes to seed.
Okay, we are to local residents and taxpayers. And our first one, and Jerry, who I've known for many years, tells me that he has the same problem I have, which is hearing sometimes. So, Jerry, go ahead, and we'll try to speak loud enough that you can hear us, okay? Go ahead.
Uh, my name's Jerry McCoy. I live at, uh, 1047 Andrick Drive. The smallest, uh, suburb or whatever you wanna call it in Washington Courthouse, 15 houses. Uh, I want to first thank you members to allow me to be here. The people in Ukraine are fighting exactly what we're doing. And I wish you would keep them in your prayers and hope they succeed in getting their freedom, because there's nothing like it. Okay, let, to the point, Trotter's Point. Uh, there is a rel- a, um, ordinance before council for the second reading, uh, rezoning, uh, ordinance number two, 2022. Uh, I have with me some documents, and I won't read them all to you.
Thank you, Jerry.
From 2005, Mr. Denon, I believe, was present at a lot of those meetings.
Yeah, I remember it well.
Mr. Pitstick was probably... This is, uh, this was a resolution to annex and set the zoning for Trotter's Point. Very contentious. Six months back and forth, back and forth. Uh, we ended up with an agreement in 2005, the, in, uh, August. I'll get rid of these. That's just, just for show. Ms. Ford was gracious enough to pull up some documents for me. One was a map of that, uh, zoning. Uh, another was when it was, uh, introduced and taken care of. I have some maps here that I'd like to maybe show my presentation. We'll have to share. I'm a poor boy. I have to make my own copies.
We can share, Jerry.
I'm sure Ms. Ford would have made me copies.
We would.
But as, as I understand this zoning re- rezoning, uh, this company, uh, JLB wants to rezone, uh, some lots. Those lots are marked in black pencil. The existing, uh, R2, he wants to change those from, uh, R1B to R2, which is from single-family to double-family housing. These lots are 42, 43, no, so I'm sorry about that. He wants to add lots 73, 74, 75, 76 to the, uh, R2 zoning. Also, he wants to add lots 93, 94, and 95 to the, uh, R2 from single-family housing to two-family housing. At the last meeting, the representative indicated there was, uh, 23 lots to be rezoned. He, he is discussing all the lots in the outer circle of, of that, even though 20 of those lots are already zoned R2. Okay, now, but my question is why? Uh, maybe the representative isn't here to answer, but I'm sure the council can take that into consideration as why. He also stated, uh, that these lots were... He said 22 properties. He evidently took 95 as a base number and deducted... I don't know, I lost my notes. But anyway, he, he requested that 22 properties, and if you count the already zoned in the, uh, yellow or orange, if you count them one at a time, you'll find that there's 23 lots. So he, little misinter- uh, misinformation there. Okay, he also, uh, stated that the, uh, that all these lots are along Route 35. As you can see by the map, 95, 94, 93, 92, 91, 90, 89 are not contagious to Route 35. Matter of fact, lot number 95 is in the side yard of the house number eight in Andrick Drive. I... When we went through this, we, we all agreed that there was a need for that type of housing. That's been 17 years ago. Has not been a, uh, any change in this. And if I am, and you can correct me, but whenever property is sold, the zoning goes with the property. Is that correct?
It doesn't change.
Yes.
So it goes with the, you could say it goes with the property.
So, so this map with, uh, well, uh, with the 20 lots plus, well, the 23 lots, plus he wants to add the, uh, no, 23 lots plus the four, if you notice, lots 45, 44, 43, 42, across Andrick Drive are also R2 in that zoning. I, when we, and this was all settled in 2005, we finally came to the consensus that this was the best for the community. It put the double housing down, close to 35. Some of it come up by the church on the right, as you can see. But we said we didn't want R2 housing up at Andrick Drive. 95, 94, and 93. I'm asking the council to either table this until we can get a better definition of what's needed, what is appropriate, or turn this down, this ordinance down in its entirety. Thank you for your time. Questions?
Yeah, just wait. Mr. Denon, can you speak to this, his questions and so on? I know that you have met with Mr. McCoy before.
Oh, yeah, Jerry, we met Jerry back in 2005. Uh, the first phase of that went all the way through the process. Rod's interpretation is that the second phase that hasn't been built about what you're talking about now, that our, so all of those lots, the zoning was essentially R1, and that's why you have an ordinance to rezone lots 73 through 95 inclusive to R2. That was Rod's interpretation of what happened, what, a decade ago, no more than a decade ago now. They went through the whole process with the, the first phase. We had him go back to planning commission, simply because of the length of time that had to last since anybody had looked at the phase that was never developed.
Is this map, because I do remember him saying, like Jerry said, that it was, pass that over.
Have we got one?
They have.
They don't.
Oh.
That, that would have.
Um, that, they were along 35.
Yes, that was very mis- because I specifically asked that question, and they're not.
If that's, I, I don't know. I'm just asking here. But I do remember that.
Yes.
And he did say they were along 35.
Is, if, you agree that that's an accurate map, uh, the designations that I gave them?
Is that the, is this the one I gave you the other day?
Yes, but then I added...
So 73 through 95.
They're up to the, yeah. That's the map you gave.
The 35 side of the road.
This is... Uh, R2, R1B is north of that. This is all south. There's 20 lots R2. The red...
Mm-hmm.
He wants to add one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I'm not object, I'm not objecting to lots over here, 73, four, five, and six. I'm objecting to these three lots here.
93, 94, and 95.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the ones. Okay, that gets up into more of the resistance.
Yeah, that's up, right up next to, and like I say, in the side yard of, uh, Mrs. Adur in, on Andrick Drive.
Yes.
So, Joe, the ones that are not along 35, 88 to 92, are those R2 currently or not?
Uh, if my recollection is correct, Rod's interpretation was that they are R1, hence you have the rezoning legislation in front of you to R2.
Is Rod here?
Where is Rod?
I came all the way home.
I'm pretty sure he's not here.
We're gonna see if Rod's here. Mr. Bryant's here. I don't know whether he is.
Oh, oh.
Here's what makes me mad.
He's on a check and City Council.
He said I am on Route 35, and he said, yes.
And, uh... Where, where, what did I do with?
A church, that's a great...
Uh, yeah.
Ms. Ford was gracious enough to give me a certified copy of that zoning. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. This is a car path in the end, but you're right.
Is he not here?
He is not here.
Okay.
That says 5, Ohio, I think that's what this is.
So, Joe, you're not, can you speak to his questions about them? Because I do remember them saying it was along 35, and if that is an accurate map, it's along 35.
Yeah, I think that that was a reference to the, the general direction that you were talking about at the time. But it is a little bit, does creep over further, yes.
Well, he also said there were gonna be 44... Well, he also said there were going to be forty-four units, so now there's going to be more than forty-four units?
Yeah, I believe that the gentleman counted twenty-two, but you could count twenty-three, yes.
Yes.
So if you have a duplex, then you multiply by two.
Yeah, that's what I meant, by forty-four. It looks like it's a little bit more than that now. Or they're wanting to add.
Uh, somewhere, somewhere according to my
Yeah.
figures, if I can find them. I believe, I believe it's on on that map. If, if, twenty lots, okay, seven added, that's twenty-seven lots times two.
Right, right. So it's gonna be more than.
That's fifty-four.
Yeah, that's more than he told us.
And then the minutes, the last one.
Three, four, five, six.
Lot less than that.
That's what I was saying, yes, you're right, you're right, you're right.
They didn't address these.
But I guess these are already.
That gentleman was here.
Yes.
Answer some questions.
Is forty-two for forty-five already R2?
Rod's interpretation is that they're R1.
All right.
Even all those along thirty-five are all still.
I will express my frustration, because I specifically asked where these lots were located. And I went over there the other day and drove it, because I had a delivery, and I, I thought, okay, it's gonna be okay, but, I mean, here's my opinion, I'd love to be the backdoor neighbor of a church, because that's a great neighbor, they're not gonna cause you any grief, and so I guess I'm feeling, and then I believe the next big lot is houses, and then the next lot that's half on the page is the dealership, am I correct? Where the pink and black dot is, those are houses. Am I correct? Right beside the Nazarene Church. Nazarene Church has two lots. Then there's, there's, there's houses, and then there's the dealership, right?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
So I feel like I was misleded the other day, because that is not along thirty-five.
No.
So I would.
One thousand eight hundred feet away, according to this map. Which is a large-sized scale map.
Right.
I'm fine, no, I got it here, so give me any other visuals. I'll get all that stuff.
Okay. Mr. Dennon, do you want to add anything else, or do we just need to decide what we're gonna do when we get to that legislation?
You could, if you have any other questions for Jerry, but it would be when you get to the legislation, if you have, if you, that gives you some additional time to think about it before you get there. But option-wise, you can
Vote.
Vote, up, down, table, whatever you want to do.
Okay.
What?
We're going to, we'll get to that legislation here in a minute.
Okay.
Like he said, we can either vote for it, against it, or table it.
Okay.
But we appreciate your input.
Yes, very much so.
Mr. McCoy, did you have any other documents? Any other documents?
He has not.
If you could, if you could provide those to Joe.
The only other document would be this map that I kept for seventeen years, which was the original. Mr. Bryant argues that it's a preliminary plot, but it's exactly the same as that.
Okay.
Only in a lot more detail.
Anything you have, can you provide to Mr. Dennon, so that I can get a copy of it? He's gonna make a copy for me.
That should be in the files.
And for all of us, yes. All right, thank you.
Are you through with me on that?
I am, thank you very much.
What about the next one?
The next.
I'm on there twice.
Oh.
I covered it.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jerry.
That's funny.
You are on there, go ahead.
Miss Hernandez says she travels Forty-One South?
Well, I was, I own the flower shop, so I was on a delivery the other day, and I was in the area, and I thought, while I'm here, I'm gonna accomplish two things.
Forty-One South is also Highland Avenue.
Correct.
Elm Street intersects.
Yes.
Dead ends into it. Have you ever drove Elm Street to Forty-One?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Pulled up there?
Very dangerous.
And looked to the north? To see if there's any uncommon, uncommon traffic, and what do you see? Utility pole, that big round. Three foot from the right away, it's gotta be at least three foot. I would like for the service department, the safety department, or someone look about getting that pole moved.
That intersection has come up before, but that's still in the county, isn't it, Joe?
If I'm thinking what Jerry's talking about, the pole, it could be, but it, it'll be DPNL's or AS's pole.
It's a wooden pole.
And we can talk to them about if they can move that.
Another alternative, put a traffic light there. I don't think it deserves that yet, but if we keep adding forty, forty, forty housing units every year or two, we're gonna have to have a traffic light out there somewhere.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. Next, we have Mr. Kearns. Did I say that right? If you would come up, tell us your name and your address. Then you can address council.
Good evening, everybody. My name is David Kearns, I'm at forty-one ninety-four, old US thirty-five southeast, out by the distribution center. It's great, it's country, it's quiet, smells good in the winter, or in the summertime, or tilling the fields and everything like that, I love it. This evening, I'm here to talk about business. My business. I have an ASCORP, I have a charitable organization. I have two shops. Well, hypothetically, I have two shops. I'm seeking funding, secondary funding for my business. You see, I'm a disability, I'm a single dad, and so far, I'm doing great, but when you file an ASCORP, you don't realize the fees that are involved with that. I can't really sell my stocks that I said I have in exchange for funding, until I pay about ten thousand dollars in fees and have those stocks on the market legally. I've done extensive research and development over the next, last three years, as I've been developing this business. My forms are actually at Brian Pettit's right now, where we're talking about taxes, being prepared and filed for the first time in three years. I haven't made no money legally, I haven't made no money to show any profit, but I've got what I've invested, and according to ASCORP guidelines, I'm actually gonna have penalties, because I haven't filed timely. It's okay, I accept that. I'm still developing my business. I founded my business here, I've lived here for about a decade or more. I've watched this community slowly decline. I'm actually very disappointed in the community as a whole, to allow our society to decline in the way it has. When I started living here about a decade ago, it was very humble. I pulled up the four-way stop, it's go ahead. I'm from Cleveland, Ohio, where it's no, I'm going first. I love it here. I got away from the rat race, but now I'm back in the rat race, because of the things that are going on in our community behind closed doors, the drugs. Enough sad. This isn't my first business. January first, two thousand thirteen, I formulated Property Preservation Solutions. I did foreclosure work for the banks, it was the third year doing foreclosure work for the banks, I was a subcontractor for two years. The company landed a five-state contract and got rid of me. The only thing I didn't do was go after their client, because legally I can, I'm a business management degree holder. So I, I seeked all the American companies instead of the Indian Florida company. I had to work out the Wazoo. I was on track to make about a hundred and twenty-five on my first calendar, until I wrecked a motorcycle, trying to learn how to ride. That's not important, because today, nine years later, I've worked myself off of four prescription medications successfully. I did that as a single father, because we lost his mother due to the opioid crisis. At the end of the opioid crisis, with her weakened heart from bad back surgery and taking these different medications, her doctor gave her muscle relaxers. Today, we know that's a deadly combination, you don't do that, I feel they killed my wife, the love of my life, the mother of my child. Today, I'm a lot better off, my son's six years old, he just started kindergarten for, you know, I now have time to develop my business a little bit better, instead of giving him all of my love and time. My son is my world, I do everything for him, he's at the forethought of everything that I do. My business is with you people in mind. My business is with these people in mind, and our citizens as a whole in society nationally. The funding that I seek is extensive, but the reason why it's so extensive is because as soon as I have the money necessary to do it appropriately, I'm not just in Washington courthouse, I'm a national person with shops nationally. I'm an ASCORP dual-shop franchise. So, yeah, I might just buy some real estate in certain strategic states, and just let it sit there until everything's going here appropriately. I need shops, two shops, I need a warehouse. I have a source for warehouse materials, and I could have it shipped here for pennies on the dollar, because people order something, didn't get it. Then I need contractors to put these warehouses up to house my goods. So there, you can see already how not only am I thinking about how I'm gonna set my business up here, how I'm gonna house it here, and move and work from here, but also how many people I can immediately put to work. I need contractors to put up a steel building that's a warehouse. I need them to furnish or do everything inside of it to, you know, suit my needs. That's of a lot of people doing a lot of work for me. And that's also paying a lot of money to do this. The cheapest building that I found that would suit the beginning needs of the very beginning is about a hundred and fifteen. There's a medical building over behind the school by McDonald's, it's been for sale for several years, I already called, it's about a half a million. I'd love to buy that and allow the practice that's there to stay there, and then turn the left side that there's nothing into a holistic, therapeutic acupuncture-type facility. That's a half a million. There's a storefront next to Hibachi, I called that gentleman, and there is two businesses that's working in there, so I didn't know that. But I know I could get it at for about eighty-three thousand. His question to me was, what would you do with it after you got it considering there's people working down there, he says, well, I'd have a place to live above in an office. Why don't I get rid of the people, they're running a business, they're making money, why would I want them to leave? Just because there's curtains on the window, and I don't see what they're doing? Okay, cool, I can go somewhere else, I can open up a different shop, but I'd still like to own the building.
Okay, Mr. Kearns, can you tell me what you're asking, because
Well, this, this is the, by all means.
We have ways of helping people who want to start businesses and so on, but we're, the city is not in the
I've spoken to Chelsea Baker already.
Starting businesses.
Sure, I'm the entrepreneur here, I'm the business older. I'm here, I'm here seeking funding.
What are you wanting from us?
Seeking funding, sir.
We don't do that.
Again, the city's not into just giving people
Right, I've already spoken.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I have a history with Chelsea Baker, I've already spoken to, I can, I'm a director about my business venture, she's open to helping me establish this. This is more to like bring you guys' attention, that this is me, this is what I wanna do.
Okay.
I understand. I'm looking for support from council. If I'd like to tell you about my business, I'd like to answer any questions you have. I'm looking for, you know, my population's support.
I understand, and again, there are certain things that we can help, and groups here in the city can help
Sure.
With businesses starting, but we just don't provide hundreds of thousands of dollars to start a business, can you imagine?
Then by all means, where would you recommend I go to seek the things that I need, and then there, and now you can provide me with the information that I need?
Where you can find hundreds of thousands of dollars, I can't give you anyplace.
Okay.
I don't know what to tell you. You need, you know, anybody that starts a business, like some of our council members have, they have the funding themselves to start the business, now they may need some help in different ways.
Sure.
And there's Community Improvement Corporation, and there's other groups, but we just don't provide hundreds of thousands of dollars to start a business.
My experience is you have to have the money upfront, and then you can ask for additional support. I worked a job for eight years and did nothing but save the money, and that's what got me with the ability, no one helped me. I did it all on my own, I was not married, my family did not help me.
And that's where I'm at now, three years in, man.
So, but this isn't the appropriate place, I mean, Chelsea's the person you need to talk to, Small Business Administration's place you talk to, you look for grants or opportunities through whatever type of business you're doing. I mean, it's not easy. If I wanted to go find money right now to expand on my building, it's not there, free money's not there.
I know. Our economy's going down the toilet quite fast, nationally.
Probably the place to start for that kind of money, like Mrs. Hernandez just said, would be the Small Business Administration.
I, now see.
Start with that, that would give you some answers.
I definitely have already been on their website, I can apply there, absolutely. The reason why I'm approaching my city first, Chelsea Baker specifically, and their forward, is because I wanna give our city a first chance to be involved with like a percentage stake. That way, however this grows from there, obviously that percentage comes back to the city, and it's a constant revenue stream for you guys. That's the intent there.
But like they said, we don't.
But yes, you're right, the SBA, there is federal funding, there's all different sorts of funding for my business.
Yes.
But I'd rather get additional funding, my secondary, because I've got my own invested already. I'd rather get the secondary first funding here.
Do you have a complete business plan put together?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. A five-year plan?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good.
So it's Small Business Administration.
Yeah, you need to go to Small Business Administration.
So just go up to Columbus and then go to that office and say, here, any help?
Well, there or Cincinnati.
Yes, sir.
And I'll tell you what, here's what's gonna happen, you're gonna be turned down about four or five times.
Yes, sir.
They're gonna keep asking questions, and asking for more and more information.
Yes, sir.
You have to be very persistent, and you have to give them that information. And they're gonna ask for all that, so you gotta be prepared, you can't give up early.
Absolutely.
So you've gotta keep at it.
I haven't given up yet, that's why I'm here this evening.
Well, thank you very much for your time tonight, we appreciate it.
And again, you know, if I was misunderstood by coming here this evening, that's not necessarily I wasn't misunderstood. This was an opportunity to speak about business, and maybe you guys see this face in a different light, because my car don't necessarily fit in so much around here, it looks a little tuna-ish, just saying. I got a little Fiat five hundred, it's great gas mileage, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everybody, thank you.
Okay, we are ready to move into legislation. First of all, that legislation that is previous, has been previously introduced, and the first one is Ordinance Number Two, twenty twenty-two, and it's ready for second reading.
So can I make a motion to table this until we get additional information?
I think it's a good idea.
Can you, yes, you can.
Okay, so that's what I'd like, I mean, I didn't know if it was the appropriate time, that's what I would like to make the motion table.
And I will second that.
Okay, and Mark, I just wanna make sure procedurally here.
Am I right?
Can we do that?
Okay. So Mrs. Hernandez makes a motion to table, and Mr. Johnson seconds. All right, any, can we have discussion, or just?
Can't have discussion.
No discussion, okay, I wanna make sure we do this right. Okay, we need to vote.
Chrisman?
No.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Um, boy, I sat in on the zoning meeting on this, and the zoning board approved this.
Change, change, change.
Motion to table is not a definitive decision.
I know, I understand that, I'm just trying to decide, okay. I say no. So it's tabled. Mark, say, wait a minute, what, I wanna table it, whatever I said.
You'd be yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, okay.
I have to think about that person. Okay, so the motion is tabled. So we will move on to Resolution Number R ten, twenty twenty-two, and it's second reading.
I'll move that we put Resolution R ten, twenty twenty-two on second reading.
Second.
And, discussion. Roll call.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution Number R ten dash two thousand and twenty-two, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Dennon, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into contract with best equipment for the purchase of a Timeco Model six sixty street sweeper.
I'll move for adoption.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Into new legislation. First is Ordinance Number Three, twenty twenty-two, first reading.
I'll move that we put Ordinance Number Three, twenty twenty-two on first reading.
I'll second.
Discussion.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman, as I read through this.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman, as I read through this. I was curious on the first page. Are we just paying Kelly seventy-five cents to a dollar and a quarter an hour for her services?
No, that's in addition to her regular wage because she's the clerk to council.
Which is how much?
Off the top of my head, I can't tell you, but let's say that, that we paid her fifteen dollars an hour, you're gonna add seventy-five cents to that because she performs the clerk duty.
Not very much money. Considering these other people get twenty dollars per meeting.
Yeah, but she gets the seventy-five cents all the time.
All the time for what?
She gets it even if she's not here, downstairs she gets it too.
Oh, even though she's not in council?
Yeah, yeah.
Forty hours a week?
It's not just for the hours of council, it's to, to the whole wage.
So if there were two secretaries right now, she would be the one who makes more money per hour because she's doing this too. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Kelly, are you opposed to the amount? You are opposed to the amount, you think it should be higher?
Wait, if you would ever say that they wouldn't want more money, I'm just kidding.
I would never ask that you forget that.
I didn't know if that was a, a last question, but.
It's like she's working the second shift, she gets extra money.
Put you on the spot and then.
I'm getting uncomfortable.
As I said. Gang, this is our decision, not hers, this is our decision, that's, if you have any other discussion about, okay, but we don't need to talk to her about it, so. Is there any other discussion? Roll call.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Sorry. Ordinance number three dash two thousand and twenty-two, an ordinance amending ordinance number eighteen dash two thousand and fourteen and providing pay grade in the classification plan and pay schedule for employees of the City of Washington Courthouse, Ohio. Creating and abolishing certain positions and repealing all prior ordinances or parts thereof inconsistent therewith.
Resolution number R eleven, twenty twenty-two, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R eleven, twenty twenty-two on a first reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch? Resolution number R eleven dash two thousand and twenty-two, resolution approving the contract with the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Incorporated for Sergeants, twenty twenty-one. Dash MED dash twelve dash fifteen eighty.
Resolution number R twelve, twenty twenty-two, first reading.
I'll move we put resolution R twelve, twenty twenty-two on first reading.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a, uh, question on page fifty-two. On the wages and compensation, it looks like they xed out each year and replace it with a period that has skips years now. The one we're now using says ten years, five percent. Fifteen years, seven and a half percent, now are they still going by this chart that's scratched out?
We scratched it out because the chart only, there's nobody that the old chart applies to anymore. You only have the longevity chart, aren't you?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the old chart, there's no longer an employee to which that chart applies to, they're all underneath the new chart that isn't scratched out. So we eliminated the old one because when Tom Queen retired, he would have been the last employee in police that the old chart applied to.
So if somebody has twelve years in by this new chart, what's their percentage?
Looks like to me would be five percent.
That's what I thought.
Mm-hmm.
Two and a half, three, three and a half, four, four and a half, five. Then, uh, after fifteen years, seven and a half, and then after twenty years, ten percent.
So they get five percent from ten to fifteen years?
Yeah. Who do you think is?
Uh, I think we're ready for a roll call.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R twelve dash two thousand and twenty-two, a resolution approving the contract with the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Incorporated for Patrol Officers. Twenty twenty-one dash MED dash twelve dash fifteen eighty-one.
Resolution number R thirteen, twenty twenty-two, first reading.
I'll move that we put resolution R thirteen, twenty twenty-two on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R thirteen dash two thousand and twenty-two, a resolution approving the contract with the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Incorporated for Dispatcher Secretary. Dispatcher, twenty twenty-one dash MED dash twelve dash fifteen eighty-two.
You? Okay, we're ready for miscellaneous. I think I'm gonna start in the middle this time. Mr. Schultz?
Oh, me!
You got anything?
Yeah, well, I really did have a lot, but I wanna thank everybody for coming tonight, the young ladies here from this school, thank you for showing. Mr. and Mrs. McFoy, thank you for all your input and the maps and all of that, that is fantastic, that you brought some light to us, so that's good, thank you very much. And sir, thank you very much for presenting your, your position there, so thank you. And, um, I, I'm with you with mowing the grass, make sure everybody gets their grass moved here, don't throw it in the street, please do not mow it into the street. And I just have a little thing here, I wanna say one time, this is a, a little quote that says, "To judge a man by his weakness, his links or his deed. Is like judging the power of the ocean by one wave." You know who said that? Elvis Presley said that. So I just want everybody to know, I just happened to stumble onto that, Elvis Presley said that, one of his, one of many things he said, but that's one of them, so, but that's all I have, thank you very much.
Still living in.
Yes, he still is.
Uh, Mr. Blair, what do you got?
I am going to defer my time to Mr. Hawk, who has quite a bit of things to say tonight.
Okay, Mr. Hawk, you're up.
I have three things, some more important than others.
Okay.
Uh, just an update on my granddaughter Wendy. She, uh, got on the bus yesterday, or no, on the plane. Last night it was delayed at midnight and then she started basic this morning, so I imagine she got about three or four hours of sleep before she started. So she's right in the thick of it, but anyway, she made it alright, she's getting yelled at a lot.
Getting yelled at, yes.
Which is something she's used to from me, anyway. Uh, and another thing that's not important, but it was a big deal to me, I got a pedicure the other day. Who would've thought?
You probably could've went rest of the month without hearing that.
And your third thing?
I'm sorry, I deferred, Mr. Chairman.
It's your fault. Look what you created.
This is, uh, uh, something that somebody wrote, Bill Crowder wrote it, but he was referring to Abraham Lincoln. And I, it kinda struck a note with me, I'd like to read it. When Abraham Lincoln became President of the United States, he was tasked with leading a fractured nation. Lincoln, uh, Lincoln is viewed as a wise leader and a man of high moral character. But another element to his makeup perhaps was the foundation for everything else. He understood that he was inadequate for the task at hand. His response to that inadequacy? Lincoln said, "I have been driven many times upon my knees by the overwhelming conviction that I had nowhere else to go. My own wisdom and that of all about me seemed insufficient for that day. And sometimes I feel like I'm out of place being on city council, which is, you know, I, it just seems like, uh, it's a pretty important job. And sometimes I don't feel all that important, but I, 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 and probably all of us don't really know how to do everything we're supposed to do. But we, we use our best judgment, we put one's foot in front of the other, one step at a time. And we try to come up with a consensus that's gonna work for the, the whole town and, uh. So that gives me a little bit of comfort sometimes when I really don't know what to do, but if I try and do my best, I think we're all, we're all probably in the same boat. Starting at Joe Denon, Mark Pitstick, everybody, I think sometimes wonders what the real answer is, but we just gotta do it and keep trying, so. It's good working with all of you and I think we all do a pretty decent job of having a good outcome, so.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Follow that, Jim.
Mrs. Hernandez, what do you got?
Just thanks to everyone who came tonight and, um, to, starting tomorrow's a busy season for those of us who, um, are Christians, so. Friday's a big day and Sunday's a big day, so to each, if you celebrate that, wonderful, enjoy it, and if you're just an Easter bunny kinda family, that's okay too, so. Enjoy the weekend, spend lots of time with family and friends.
Good advice. Mr. Johnson?
Well, I don't know about Mr. Hawk's pedicure. But on that last sentiment, uh, I agree, I think that, uh, you spoke very well, Mr. Hawk. Thank you to everyone who came. Um, I really appreciate your time and anytime people come in and, and talk to us, it's very important, so thank you.
And Mr. Christman?
Thanks to everybody that came, thanks Jerry for your information, looks like you put a lot of time in on that, we appreciate that. Also wish everybody a happy Easter. Uh, I have a quick question, probably for Mr. Pitstick. I don't know whether all, I presume all the. Members know up here that in order to overturn a planning commission, it takes six votes. Not just a majority. If. If council or somebody decided with the bishops that they don't object to a change or two. Do we then vote to kill the whole thing and start over? Or we do it to amend it?
If you, if, if you have six, it says, or you, let's say you have, uh, five that vote not to, to go forward.
It's done.
It, it's not done, because you don't have your six, but it would automatically go into effect, I think it's thirty days, but I could, I can't tell you for sure, there's a time period, I believe. Uh, I hope I'm not, uh, speaking out of turn, cause I haven't looked at it for fifteen years. So I would think if, if there's a time period that would automatically, the zoning would automatically go into effect. Because you can't, you can't, uh, overturn a planning commission recommendation unless you have three quarters, which takes, as you said, six votes.
So if we overturn it, does Bishop have to go back to the planning commission until we get something we approve?
I think your question was, can you make an amendment to the current thing without pulling clear back to?
I don't see how you can make an amendment.
So it is actually a starting over basis?
I mean, I think it's gonna start over here, I mean, and the thing about it is, you're, you're talking about a, a sixty to ninety day window that, that's gonna put them clear up. If they're planning on building anything out there this year, they're not gonna be able to build anything during the, during the current year.
Well, if I'm wrong, I'll stand corrected, but in my twenty-some years, forty years, whatever it is I've been here. I think we've overturned, only overturned it once, that was on that zoning out, where they wanted a warehouse, that church wanted a warehouse out in industrial. I think that's the only time we have, it's the only one I can remember.
It happens very, very rarely.
Yeah, so it's, it's not something that's, and I'm saying this so that everybody understands, it's not something that's prob, that may or may not happen. Because it does take six votes to overturn it. And that's happened once that I can remember, so. Anyway, that's all I got, thank you. And thank you again for coming.
Uh, again, I go along with what Kendra said, this is a special time of year. Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, David. Ladies, I may owe you extra points, this lasted longer than I thought. Um, anyway, I'm glad you came tonight and I'm glad I have them in class. The only other thing I would mention before we meet again, actually as of this coming Monday, we will have a new finance director.
That's true, I forgot about that.
I'm very excited about that. For one thing, I don't have to sign checks. Uh, but two, and more importantly, uh, let's give Christina a chance without bombarding her. To meet people, Terry Wilson has come up with, um, an onboarding process and if you haven't seen it, I'll have him send it out, I'll see him tomorrow. I'll have him send it out to you, it's mostly about getting in line, all the paperwork and all that kinda stuff, but he's also. Set up ways, I mean, times to meet with all the department heads, get to know people and so on, so let's give her some time to do that. Uh, I think several of us, I know Kendra has, I know Joe have, has, I know I have, uh, have spoken to people in the office area and told them, we want them to cooperate in every way possible. To make this work, it's gonna be a tough job. When you replace somebody who's been here thirty-two years or whatever it was, it's not easy. And so we gotta give her a chance and, uh, I want all the employees to give her a chance, including us. And so, um, anyway, she will be here Monday, I'm looking forward to it. Uh, and so let's try to do everything we can do to help her. With that, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second. Thank you.
Okay, and roll call.
Christman?
What? Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes, we are adjourned.